Good evening, everyone. It's time to call out our, well, we're gonna do invocations. First, after invocations, Mr. Phillips got to leave and go to the campus board meeting. After we pledge to the flag, invocation of pledge to the flag. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thanks for beautiful weather we've been having. Thank you all our many blessings that you have blessed us with in our lives. Lord bless all of the people here tonight. Be with all of our first responders, our military, the men and women that's taking care of our country where we can have three meetings like we have here at this board. Lord be there, be, put your hand on all of the members here tonight and maybe we can do the best we can to make the best decision for this board tonight, Lord. Just be with everybody, hold them, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justiciable.
Y'all be careful, I will be back.
We have, this workshop is, uh, is called, as you know, Columbia County is growing. We are not the little one-horse town that, uh, we used to be. I think, uh, back when I took office, the population of Columbia County was somewhere about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand people. Uh, we are way beyond that. Uh, there's a lot of things that with growth, uh, is a challenge. Uh, with that challenge, we have to bite the bullet sometime and, uh, to make Columbia County the county that we want it to be. So, uh, we don't want no surprises. Uh, we want to try to stay on top of everything. So at this time, this, uh, uh, workshop is about dealing with the growth of Columbia County. Kevin?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, and thank you for allowing us to have this workshop. As Mr. Williams just indicated, this is about the future. So I'd like to start off by saying, you know, we're in great condition right now, Columbia County. Financially, we have a lot of capital projects going on. Our day-to-day operating budgets are real good. Um, as you all know, I'm indicated on, I'm obligated on a quarterly basis to update you on your capital projects. I'm, you know, pleased we had a staff level, uh, meeting last week and ninety percent of all of our capital projects are either complete, under construction, or out to be in. So we're doing exactly what we promised you guys we would do this year. It's the new challenges that brought us here today. This growth. And later on this evening, in your regular meeting, you're gonna hear me talk about some more challenges as it relates to driveway connections. This kind of marries into everything we're doing here today. So I'd like to start it off by saying, staff, myself, we reached and did a lot of research and what we concluded, what really brought some of this here was, what is the ownership of developers that relates to the undeveloping? We're catching up with the big boys. We're in that stage. And what we learned during our research is, is very, very common for the developers to capture the cost and what it's costing on our infrastructure to get to their dirt. So with that, we'll get started with what we're really doing here today. So back in twenty-twenty-two, I came to the board at that time and advised them of what was going on at the landfill. As you well know, the landfill is an enterprise fund. It works on its own operating money. You escrow enough money to expand, to pay your staff, to buy your equipment, so forth and so on. The DEP came in. They said, okay, class three will now be similar to class one with exception of one-liner. What does that mean? You got the capital outlay cost of seven million dollars. You have LEH8 detection, LEH8 collection, and your initial construction cost that we would have never had. In twenty-six, that's becoming reality. We're currently designing the expansion of class three as we speak. The reason I brought landfill up, if I would not have mentioned a word in twenty-twenty-two, about right now, I would be up here saying we need seven million dollars to capture the expansion of class three, or you wouldn't have a class three. So I was obligated at that time to advise the board of what we were looking at. We cured our problem by adjusting our rates, and there was some pushback. But you now have enough money escrow, almost, you will by the time it becomes construction, to capture that cost. That opens me up to what we're actually talking about today. So, MSBU, like and similar, in June of twenty-three, we modified, modified our land development regulations to create a municipal service benefit unit. This creates a funding source for the county to operate, maintain the transportation and stormwater facilities of the new development. It ensures the landowners with the subdivision pays the cost at the time it needs, not the fellers out, live out in the country that do not enjoy the same amenities. So your MSBU that you created, that is now in effect, solve the issue when we're out repaving all these hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of subsidies, et cetera. In the future, we didn't go backwards. In the future, you solved your problem. I mentioned a while ago that our capital projects are going real well, and they are. We're staying within finance, we're staying in time and fashion. I thought it was easy enough to put out these four projects. This summer, we're going to repave Baskin-Nars from Faith Road to State Road forty-seven. That works today. We know within a decade, we're going to have to expand that road. That's what our traffic study showed us. We're good today, we're good for a few years. But we have to put Baskin-Nars on the radar for four-lane expansion. That project today is north of ten million dollars. Now, all of y'all that knows, y'all have ever been involved in highway construction of that magnitude, that takes years before the tractors get on job. We don't have a dollar in the pot today to do that with. Go over to your five-hundred-acre flat field. We spend north of two million dollars on that. We're pursuing grants, all that stuff. Right now, we don't have any money in the kitty to jump on that job. Out at your inner motor park, we have a railroad, we have, we're under construction of a forty-million-dollar sewer plant. We got some money to build an entrance road, but you do not have enough money to get to the finish line for your water plant. As we all know, we had a groundbreaking, we now have businesses going out there, we're depending on others, but you do not have enough money in the kitty today to finish your water plant. Down in Ellisville, you've got a three-plus-million-dollar need for a sewer plant. Whether we partner with FDOT, whether we expand our own, and as everybody knows, we are negotiating with property owners to create a service road. There's three separate projects active in the kitty down there today, and you do not have enough capacity to satisfy the new development. Those are four projects that are just easy pickings, that you are short on funding of. Okay? So we did some research. This next slide, we took a look at St. John's, Putnam, and Nassau. When you look at it today, and I picked a three-thousand-square-foot home on the roof. That's a typical one. And of course, my fault. So today, permit fees out of the building department, you pay roughly eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars for my home in Columbia. Side bill, twenty-four-hundred dollars. St. John's, sixteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars, my home. Twenty-one-thousand dollars for a side bill. Putnam, very like and similar to us, eight-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-eight. Nassau, twenty-three-three, twenty-three-eight. So if you do those as an average, you're eight-ninety in Columbia from my home, twenty-four-hundred dollars for a side bill, ten-three from my home, and twelve-three for a side bill. Columbia and Putnam do not have impact fees. I think the numbers are very obvious what's going on right there. Okay? What defines impact fees? With a federal level, I just said the definition of an MSBU, right? So the folks that side live in subdivision, for lack of a better word, you capture with the MSBU later on down the road, they pay their way to repave, repipe, reditch, repot. It ensures new development and redevelopment projects pay their fair share of the improvements to mitigate the added burden they will impose on the transportation system. They relieve a portion of the burden for the general taxpayer. Impact fees allow municipalities to pay for the necessary water, sewer, and transportation infrastructure to open new parcels of land development. Impact fees increase, increase the cost of development by shifting the cost of the infrastructure improvements from the taxpayers to the developers. At a state level definition, new development necessitates new or expanded infrastructure to accommodate new residents. Without the fees, existing residents would in effect subsidize the cost of new development. In my opinion, it almost mirrors the definition of an MSBU. What is everybody else doing? We rank twenty-seven out of sixty-seven counties. Twenty-four counties do not have impact fees. Now be real careful with this one. Putnam, we just talked about, now they're gonna take a look at it June thirtieth of this year. Santa Rosa out west, they're exploring roads, parks, law enforcement impact. They completed their study in twenty-three. Bay out Panama City, fire, transportation, parks, libraries. Ocalusa, TDC tax. Leon County has six transportation trust funds, six. So I call it the shuffleboard. So how you define it? Escambia, additional one-point-five local officer sales tax. That was what was pursued here a few years ago. Smaller than us, Dixie, Gilchrist, Wakulla, Levy, they do have impact fees. Dixie, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Gilchrist, seventeen-fifty. Wakulla, ten-forty-eight. Levy, fourteen-ten. Eighty-five percent of all counties in the state of Florida, like and similar to Columbia or larger, have impact fees. Fifteen percent of the counties smaller than us have impact fees. We briefly talked about Baskin-Nars. We're obtaining surveys for right-of-way requirements in order to address the upcoming need for additional capacity. We're currently completing construction plans for the resurfancy project for this summer, but it's estimated substantial improvements within one decade. No design or extensive cost testing has been formed or north of ten million dollars. And that means we have to get started today, for lack of a better word. If we would hit it right down the middle, and it's just a number, two-thousand dollars per residential unit, let me, let me stop there. We simply looked at residential because it's easy. If this board says, we are completely not interested in this, you know, it's on the board's task, there's no sense, my guys taking this a step further. But if we would have been doing two-thousand dollars, I'm not talking about commercial, hotel, and warehouse, simple song, just residential, five-point-one million dollars would be in kitty today over the last five years. And that's it. So at the end of the day, we're good today, just as I indicated with the landfill, we'd have said nothing back several years ago, we'd have a seven-million-dollar problem today. In my opinion, you got rooftops going in and in the motor park, you got people scratching the door down to get to Ellisville. And David and I have looked at this thing every which way but Sunday, and we have some tough choices to make. If we're gonna continue on just with the projects, and obviously the utilities are expanding, so forth and so on, it's growing things, gentlemen, and that's where you're at. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm subject to any questions, but that's the short and long of it.
Comment, boy?
Kevin, didn't we, didn't Columbia County have impact fees at one time?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, was that never, I mean, we never, I remember it was canceled, I think, in two thousand and eight. Is that when it was canceled?
I think, I think you're correct.
When economy took a nosedive, property values dropped?
Somewhere around there, yes, sir.
So at that time, was it ever discussed about bringing it back, or what it would be if you brought it back, or?
I do not recall, Commissioner. You know, to today, impact fees, because of all, you know, as recent as the day, yesterday and today, we received emails that another hundred-and-forty-door units coming at Baskin and, uh, sisters welcome. Another like and similar to a convenience store is coming at Marvin Burnett in Baskin. You know, it's, it's fast. It's, it's all happening real fast. And if you would have asked me three or four years ago, three years ago, we were not in this position, you know, I'd never dreamt we would be running as fast as Ellisville. And it's a good problem to have. It's, it's a good problem. But with any problem, you need to identify solutions.
Well, I haven't really been that involved in pulling building permits in the last five years since I've been on the board. But I know five years ago, I was pulling permits in all the surrounding counties, and I can't think of any county that didn't have an impact fee.
Yes, sir.
Besides Columbia County?
Yes, sir. Eighty-five percent, once again, our size or larger, eighty-five percent have. Those that don't have a lot of various avenues they're capturing their monies.
Well, I know we don't wanna be like Alachua County in many ways, but for example, five years ago in Alachua County for a double-wide mobile home, it was not uncommon to pay a five-thousand-dollar impact fee. For, for five-thousand, for double-wide mobile home.
Commissioner Ford, I, you're exactly right. And, and me and Kevin had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about this, and of course, I did some of my calling, but, you know, and it seems as though that, Kevin, every county that enacted these impact fees that I could research on my own in the last about twelve years has all been somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-five to a dollar-five a square foot. That's, that's an easy way, that's Tim Murphy's way, you know, figuring it out. Comes out to, because the average house being built in the state of Florida right now is just a little bit under seventeen-hundred square feet. So, you know, when you sit there and put them numbers together, uh, and, and the thing about it is, and I argue this point, you remember, uh, a neighborhood up there in Ron's district several years ago, you know, I made this simple statement, people on the south end shouldn't be paying for everybody's, you know, maintenance on their retention pond. We, and we collectively as a group, we fixed that. And, and when I reached out and talked to other, uh, and heck, I'll put it on the spot, because Pete, I, I, I hold a lot of confidence in Pete, I mean, like Pete said, he said, you know, it's, it's, it's fair, it's a fair way about doing things. And, uh, and that comes out of Pete's mouth, you know, and Pete will be one of the bigger developers that ever come through Columbia County. But the, uh, but you know, whenever I first met with the group out there that was, uh, gonna do the three-hundred-house complex across from the girls' softball field, uh, they were perplexed to the fact that, no impact fees? And I said, well, not yet, we'll see how long it takes. But, you know, of course, the city's got them, and they, they need them, you know, but, and even with the city, uh, unfortunately, you know, municipalities get caught up in the thing that they charge their impact fees, but, you know, it takes a lot of that money to operate their government. So when it comes time to do infrastructure improvements and stuff, that impact money's not there. And that would be, I, I back it a hundred percent. My biggest thing is, I wanna put a program together towards that. It's set on the shelf until we need it, you know, you know what I'm saying, as far as the, the money's generated here, that five-point-one, you know, we earmark it out every year at budget, budget time, to where is it that these monies go? And, and that was kind of ironic that you said about the, what county was that with all the, uh, transportation trusts?
Leon.
Yeah. And, uh, 'cause I, I ran into that little research there, and, uh, there, there's other government officials over there that like to think that transportation trust is a slush fund too, but we all know that's not true, so.
You do?
Yes, sir.
Steve?
Um, and I agree with you, Kevin, and, and I've talked to several people about this, just, just along and along, ask them, what do you think? And in my opinion, it's just like you said, it, it correlates with everything else. You, you come into a neighborhood as a new person, and let's say the road just got paved. Well, that wasn't your investment. Those people been living there twenty-five years, thirty years, a lot of people in this neighborhood been living here in this place tonight, here fifty, sixty, seven years. They been paying taxes, replacing roads, doing all this stuff. Then you have this new person that moves in, and they get all those amenities, and a lot of them are brand-new in their neighborhood. And to me, that's, they have no, they just came in and they're new people and they're getting, in, in other words, the people that are already there paid for everything for them to have the nice place to move into, you know, as far as, you know, infrastructure and keeping the roads up and all that. So I'm like you, I, I think it correlates with the other, where, where the people that are already here are paying for everything. The people that show up have not, have not really put any money in until they show, they show up, you know. So I think you, you were correlating it with the other, um...
Yeah, MSBU.
Yeah, MSBU's. I mean, a lot of people that are paying for, like my district has a lot of the, the paved roads and the, and the neighborhoods and, and water retention ponds and all that. Well, there's guys down South Town and Rocky District that don't pay for any of that, that don't have to pay for that, because they got ten-acre field they live in. So it's not fair for them to have to pay for something that's up north of town, you know, in a, um, subdivision. So it's, MSBU's a good thing. In fact, I had a, I had a developer today and, uh, that wants to do it. Like, he's dying to do it because they don't wanna worry about those developments years later, you know. Pay as you go, you know, and...
Commissioner Oliver, when you say you agree with me, I, I wanna just clarify, just like the landfill situation.
Yeah.
You know, my job, I'm obligated to advise the board, you know, David and I, we see problems coming. And we're, we're searching for avenues to, to solve those problems before they get here. We're not saying it's a perfect world, but we simply glanced at residential only. When I saw that number, during our research, I heard in Orange County, her hotel door, nineteen-thousand dollars.
Right, right.
I mean...
Per door?
Per door. I mean, per room, you know. So I mean, you know, and we're, we're not dare recommend going back in time or anything. This is new construction.
Right, right. It's not Lake City, people that are already here.
No, 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 this is new construction.
That's right.
And Mr. Murphy said it the best way. We hear it all the time, well, what are your impact fees?
Kevin, for the people that are listening and watching the meeting, give us the definition of MSBU.
MSBU. Municipal Service Benefit Unit, okay? And it's exactly that, what Commissioner Oliver just said. You decide to go and live in the brand-new subdivision, you set up an independent taxing authority. We modify it on a basis. You say twenty years from now, it's gonna cost, I'm gonna just use a round number, a hundred-thousand dollars to pave a road, it's gonna cost twenty-five-thousand dollars to redo the structures, it's gonna cost fifty-thousand dollars to redo the pond, so forth and so on. Say that number comes up to two-hundred-thousand dollars. You count the amount of houses in there, everybody pays their annual share, you escrow the money, when it gets time to redo all that I just said, that we're doing all over in y'all's districts right now. There's your money to cover that.
And each one is specific to a certain subdivision?
That is correct. As Mr. Murphy indicated, you earmark it.
And, and that's, that's what I hear from some of the people in our neighborhoods, you know, people are throwing up sheds all around their house, stuff like that you're not supposed to do. Well, it's gonna be a whole lot better when the county is the homeowner association than a homeowner association that's kinda defunct and they've fallen apart, nobody's really doing anything. And even in some of these, you have to be, if you find somebody moved something beside your house that is against the HOA, you have to sue them personally because you can't get the other people in HOA to do it. And when we talked about these fees, they're much less than most HOAs, you know, the, the county's MSBU. So, and, and all these ponds, and y'all know about it, good as I do, all these ponds in my district that we can't take care of because we don't own them, and that'll be a thing of the past, you know.
Mr. Chair, if y'all recall at the last board meeting, we talked about our parks, our commercial vendors are parks. And we got clear direction. We said, you know, is it right for the taxpayers to be burdened when other folks are in there making money? Remember that? To me, this is like and similar. To me, it's, the current taxpayers are going in after the fact, you know, let's bounce back again on our developers. You know, when you tell them, well, fellers, that's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar turn lane you gotta put in. Whoa, not really. Everybody else is doing it. It's not reasonable, in my opinion, to tell the taxpayers to go pay for five-hundred-thousand-dollar turn lane.
That's right.
Okay?
When, when the developer's making money.
Sure.
And that developer, Commissioner Oliver, takes his money and leaves, you know, a big scam.
Or stays or whatever, you know.
But at the same time, you can't ask the developer to four-lane a road, it needs to be four-lane.
Right, no, no.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ford, that's gonna be a conversation later on tonight. This research proved a lot good. Item number two under me tonight is driveway connections. So we, we kinda married everything, and during our research, we found nobody's asking a developer to do that. Now, what they do, fifty trips a day, uh, trips of traffic study, one thousand trips a day, trips, another traffic study, two thousand trips a day, trips, a more extensive traffic study. We're just doing what all the bigger fellers did twenty years ago. That's what we're talking about here today. That's really it in a nutshell. We're catching up. But it's time, we have to catch up because we have to get out of, Chad and I've had a lot of conversation about this. I always say consistency in this business is key to luck. If you do one for this, do for the other, everybody understands it. MSBU, when we first talked about it, whoa, whoa, whoa. Now, everybody, developers are wanting to do it.
Yeah, developers want it.
In my opinion, once you develop criteria, and I call it check the boxes, once, we're not dare say implement this tomorrow. We understand people have got deals out there going on. You have to have an adjustment period of time, you know, you can't go out there, developer X has got his project, uh, you know, budgeted for X dollars, you can't go out there and hit him with some big per-door commercial fee. Now, if we say, and I've just been theoretical, well, that's, you know, what I'm really aiming here for a direction today, if you say, all right, Kirby, go back and go ahead and figure out what it would be if we did commercial, warehouse, hotelions, all that. I just started residential to keep it simple, to get our mind around it. If you go back and say, well, let's take a look at all of this, you know, we come back, you know, I think it would be reasonable to say, let's implement this, you know, fiscal year beginning, something like that. You know, give everybody time to digest what we're actually doing, a reasonable timeframe. But in my opinion, we have to do something. Because you're gonna run into a problem. Right now, I had a meeting last Friday with FDOT about the sewer plant in Ellisville. And that, this just marries right into this. Somebody is gonna spend three million dollars down there to get an optimal sewer plant for our newest development. I went two weeks ago this Saturday and negotiated with landowners down in Ellisville for a potential service road. I, I left that meeting feeling good. I'm of the opinion, we're fortunate enough for them to cooperate with us, and I believe they will. We have five-plus-million dollars in the bank and a promise of another three that I've been promised to be, uh, governor was not going to be to. That will enable you enough money to go down there and do as promised. You have a water plant, you have a new road, if we get lucky. Folks, we're gonna be under some serious pressure to get moving. Three million dollars minimum, irregardless we partner with FDOT, if we continue our own, three million dollars, it's not there. At some point, we don't need, uh, I heard a man one time about utilities, you cannot chase your utility, cannot chase it, you gotta get ahead of it. That's what I'm recommending here today. And I simply just need general consensus. Do you want my guys and I to dig into this deeper, come back with more information, or do not, you know, you can do nothing, you know, but, but we have to do something.
Well, I think it's worth looking at. I, I think you got it.
Kevin, go back to that first slide you had. You had three identified things on it that's facing the county now, right there. Back years ago, uh, you guys might not realize this, but back in the eighties, only there were forty-eight percent of the population are homeowners, are property owners in Columbia County, was not paying favela taxes. Didn't pay a penny of favela taxation. Everything was being funded that could from out of favela taxes and state revenue sharing. We were facing the same dynamics on, 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 on Columbia County as we are today. We're at the same crossroad. Somewhere in the late eighties or early nineties, uh, we went to a, a, a... Impact fee or assessment for garbage. Me and my neighbor like to fell out because he was one not paying ever on taxes. Why are you all gonna charge me an impact fee for garbage? Well, I don't think, sir, it's important right for me to pay for you to bury your garbage. I don't think it's fair for the, for the remaining taxpayers to pay for forty eight percent of the garbage for everybody else in Columbia County. That does not, does not pay ever on taxes. So that led to the, the establishment of a impact fee for solid waste. You generate your garbage, you pay for your garbage. The same identical thing happened with fire. At that time, we was under the, uh, uh, Lake City Columbia County Fire Department. We was paying for fire out of ever on taxes and state revenue sharing. That portion of Columbia County citizens that was not paying ever on taxes. Did not have to pay for fire, but they house were protected. We established. In that round of, uh, of discussions. When we, uh, uh, had a discussion right here in this building. About fire assessments and the agreement between the city and county with fire assessments. We, with the volunteers of, of Columbia County Fire Department, chose to go into fire business by ourselves. Break that bond between the city and the county with fire, with fire and therefore impose, uh, the fire assessment strictly for Columbia County. Everybody that owned the home or had acreage paid an assessment. Nobody got off free. When you look at what we got facing us right here today, these four items, we do not have the money to do it with. We got to get it from somewhere. You cannot. We, we, Kevin told us about Baskinars and when it got to be four lane. We got the flat field on the five hundred acres, we got, uh, the mega site on US ninety. And we, to me, we got the most liveliest next place for economic development is in Ellisville.
One hundred percent.
Busy Bee changed the whole dynamics of what we thought we could do down there to what we got to do now. So we can't sit back and, 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 and we apply for grants, but we can't always apply for grants. We cannot tell a Busy Bee, well, we got to wait and see if we can get a grant. Uh, we got to wait until we do it, the next business come in, well, we don't have the capacity to hook you up. That, that's not looking into the future.
Correct.
We need to look at Columbia County's future now. And it's, uh, an assessment of two thousand dollars per new house. Not all these houses that built from when Columbia County was first incorporated to now is in effect. It means that, that if I build a new house, I got to pay assessment, I got to share in what's in the growth of Columbia County.
All that added traffic, all this stuff we're talking about, you're paying your portion. Not old stuff, moving on a forward. That's exactly right. What we cannot have happen, and it's nobody's fault, you're exactly right, Mr. Williams, we went down there in Ellisville. We did this, we did a twenty five, we went to fifty, we get ready to go to seventy five on the sewer plant side of things. And it's all working, and then a good problem came called Busy Bee. And in my humble opinion, it will activate Ellisville. That project is making Ellisville do what Ellisville is supposed to do, and it's real. I'm liable to get a receipt letter any day now from the property owners. Gentlemen, they play ball, we have a project, we've got the money. My fear is this and this alone. We go down there, Tallahassee been so good to us, Stoss and Self has get there. A lot of people have been, so I'm just envisioning in my little way of thinking, okay, we got all this money tied up. Millions of dollars for the gas taxes potentially coming in off of this deal. We go down there, we build this beautiful service highway. We close an existing grade and build a new grade, and we've got enough money to do all that with. And then we tell Busy Bee, well, we can accommodate you.
Yeah.
That dog won't haunt y'all.
And, and the thing is, the thing, what's important about Ellisville, and to me, Ellisville is just as important as Mega Industrial Park, in my opinion. Because it's, 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 it's blowing up to be something, we really, I don't know if we all really realized what kind of taxes were going, you know, from people driving. You know, and the, the money that those places raise to soften the taxpayers hit, you know? Those are people from mostly out of town coming across, and they're, they're paying a lot of taxes to come through this county on traveling. And that's, to me, that's the best kind of tax, something that it and the local people pay, you know?
So, Commissioner Hollisworth, I, I want to reiterate something. Here's kind of where I'm at with it. If FDOT sees the need to drop north of forty million dollars worth of improvements in Ellisville, that's, that's real number. They're, they're, they're in the process of that right now. I just cannot imagine us not being in a position to build a three million dollar sewer plant. That just doesn't make sense to me.
And, and we'll return our money, we're gonna get a return on the money immediately. This ain't gonna take fifteen years, it's gonna be as soon as it's built, you know, so I agree and I, I hope we can get it up.
Commissioner Hollisworth, this whenever Ron remembers, uh, when we were doing the loves. It was pretty neat about six months thereafter, whenever we sat, remember David sat down, we looked at the revenues just coming in. Off of the sales tax and that thing, the fuel tax, what have you, it, it was, then, then when the project took place across the street, then it went TA. You watch the numbers again, I mean, it's online, you can sit there and watch your growth, it's, it's simple enough, but, you know, I, I. I, I just drove from Key West to Lake City last day and a half. And there was one project I stopped at, we stopped to get a bite deep, and there's something, and I was just sitting there doing the math, cause me and Kevin's been talking a lot. But there's, and I probably seen without exception, probably fifty to a hundred of these complexes coming through Miami, Palm Beach. But this one right here in Palm Beach, the impact fees on just that one housing, seventeen hundred units, it, it was townhouses, you know, three, four stories. Three point four million dollars. And there's a man that lives, a customer of mine lives just west of here, that's what he does for a living, he, he works for these holding companies that, you know, put these projects together. And, uh, the two thousand dollar deal that Kevin just sit, sit there and shared, uh, per door, that, that's, that's common business. It's, it's a, you know, and I'm sitting there just adding it up, then you go through the villages and go down there and get grandma, grandpa to buy you a house real quick. Look at their impact fees, a little bit over twenty four thousand dollars, so it's, it's the real deal, you know?
And I think we want to be on the low end of everything, but I, I talked to somebody in McClainy the other day, and they're pretty smart about it. And they said theirs is twenty five hundred dollars, and that's a thirty five, that's half the size of us. McClainy is half the size of Columbia County, and they have impact fees.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, change is always hard. But if you look at the facts. You have to change with the times, and we're growing, it's a good problem to have, but common sense has to kick in somewhere. You cannot operate a business that we're operating today the same way you did twenty five years ago, or you will fail.
Yes, but, but that was my point a while ago. I wasn't on the board at that time, but the board recognized at that time. There was an, there was a need for an impact.
Thirty years ago.
That was, I, I mean, we haven't had one now for fifteen years.
Yes.
I'm doing my math right around that time.
Right.
Oh, but we knew back then, the board knew back then, that it was, it was, it was something that needed to be in place at that time. And we just have never took the initiative to re-implement it, you know, and. And I understand why we, why we took it away at the time with the economy like it was, and we're trying to create, generate revenue and, and building and come back and stuff. But, uh. Now, now, really now we are paying for not bringing it back sooner, so.
Absolutely, and I believe, I, I, I do believe this. The COVID and the various pots of money, that never happened before, in my opinion, it never happened again. It enabled us, along with a lot of grants, to start a lot of these big projects. Well, looking back, kind of like your granddaddy died and left you a million dollars, you went and lived a different lifestyle. It, it kickstarted us, and it allowed to get us where we're at today. But it's fast, and somebody brought up, thinking Mr. Williams, absolutely, in a good way, Busy Bee changed Ellisville. And the, the two things that really, really prompted me to make the comment a month ago, whatever. Was I'm seeing all this on Baskin, I'm seeing one hundred forty doors, three hundred doors, convenience, uh, the Lycan Convenience Stores. Uh, the, all the stuff going on Real Road right now. And then I went to this meeting Friday and, you know, I was kind of under the impression that DOT sewer plant with minimal upgrades would suffice our immediate needs. Well, that's not the case, okay, we, we had to get into that quite deep Friday morning, and so I left out of there, okay. We've got a problem, now, it's nobody's fault, it is our fault if we don't address it.
Well, you said Dixie County has impact fees?
Yes, sir.
With all that waterfront is down there, have, they have impact fees also.
Yes, sir.
See, that tells you something.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's our responsibility. To take Columbia County into the future by planning now. Guys, it, 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 it's kind of funny when I say this. When we started talking about, well, DOT in nineteen seventy six had a plan for a bypass. That's when bypass first came up, uh, uh, in Columbia County. During their survey, they found what we found, uh, ancient sinkhole. And they abandoned that problem, that project. During the discussion on, on the five cent sale tax, gas tax, that the board initiated to pay for Baskinars. Oh, I thought we were gonna be tarred and feathered and rode out of town, run out of town. Uh, one fellow got up and said, uh, he was an activist, uh, in the county. Did y'all gonna spend all this money on this bypass, uh, when you get it, uh, finished, I can have a game of marbles in the middle of it.
Camp out that night, yeah.
Yeah, camp, camp out that night, and nobody gonna use it. Kevin billed it when he moved the signs, he couldn't move the signs fast enough, uh, for the traffic that came through. So that's looking ahead, that's, we looking ahead at Baskinars, we're looking ahead at the flat field, we're looking ahead at the, at, at, at North Florida mega site. We're looking ahead at Ellisville, that's our responsibility as elected leaders of this county. We look at out for the future, whether it's bittersweet or not.
You know, and, and Ron just to add something to that.
Yeah.
I had a conversation with a fellow the other day. That we're trying to grow the county too fast, we're trying to do this, we need to, we need to quit promoting growth in Columbia County or this, that. And, and, and my answer to him was, look, we can't stop it, all we can do is plan for it.
Yeah, that's right.
We can't stop it.
Yep.
It's coming, whether we do it. And if you don't plan for it, then you just get what you get.
Yep.
Well, you know, you, you got Swanee County, they don't have a landfill. And I'm not gonna say why that happened, cause I'm not sure why, but I bet you it had something to do with planning, didn't it?
Hey, they're paying the price for it.
I guarantee you, I'm guaranteeing, I'm not saying anything bad about Swanee County, cause it can happen real easy now. You know, I, I've sat here and watched this as a new commissioner and I go, yeah, well, we got that money. And then all of a sudden, I start seeing stuff and I go, man, how, how are we gonna do that? You know, even the landfill, we were, we were worried about getting that, you know, so if you don't plan, you're just a bad businessman.
If you got, Mr. Chair, if you guys recall. Back when we were preparing budget, inflation hit, we had this list of capital projects. And I just estimated a forty percent inflation rise. You can track those capital jobs right now, they're running in them high thirties just as honest as you. If we wouldn't have done that then, if we would've said, okay. Boy, it feels good to do all these good projects. Guys, let's take forty percent of it, I forget how much money it was, X amount of dollars, let's put this kitty, you know, that's not, that's not easy, cause we want to do other projects. If we wouldn't have done those projects, or if we wouldn't have done that inflation percentage. This would be a whole different story, way more than four projects.
It's called a.
It's planning, we planned it then, we saw it coming, that's all we're doing here today.
It's, it's, in my mind, it's being a conservative going, okay, let's don't go with twenty five percent, let's go a little above, let's go forty. And then it worked out for us.
If, Mr. Hollisworth, if I'm out of turn, I apologize in advance, that's when it just overwhelms me. When I hear various proposals of us funding stuff in the middle of fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah.
For this and that, when I, I think about things like this. It, 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 that goes above my head, because in my opinion, out of that entire list right there. There's three things you're gonna do. You're gonna finish that sewer plant in Ellisville, in my opinion, that's the first thing, is we do have an alternative, it's temporary, for water, water, uh, in a motor park. You know, we're still all breathing, if we don't four lane Baskinars Road, you're not gonna drive down it. So in the order of Ellisville, water plant, simultaneous Baskinars. Cause Baskinars, if I start today. With survey and a conceptual engineering, you got wetland mitigation, that's not a cheap project. If I start today, you might be ready when it gets time to redo that way. We're just putting a nice Band-Aid on it this summer, fella. Mr. Chair, I think I've got general consensus, is that correct?
Absolutely.
So we will go back, what our next step is. We will go back, we will research what like consumer counties are doing on the commercial side of things, and all the devil in the details. I will ask for another workshop when that exercise is complete. And then I'll ask for direction at some point if we can digest this. Let's be reasonable, let's come to a regular session board meeting. You know, you can vote it up or down, we'll set times and dates and things of that nature of when all this goes into effect, if it's palatable for everybody in the room.
When do you think you'll have this ready to come before the board for adoption?
So my next step will be come back one more time for a budget of a workshop rather, to explain, once again, I just captured residential. My end goal is to come in with like consumer counties, options of what we're gonna set our base, some counties do it by square foot, some do it by the dwelling, so forth, by the door. But all those, I, I just didn't want to go through all that if I got a negative census here today. So let's go ahead and do all that. Mr. Williams, I will be, I will obligate to have that next workshop in the next month, okay? I'll come back with that next workshop, if y'all can digest it, it's just simply a matter of getting to a board meeting at that point, I'll have my information.
Well, Kevin, with, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ron. I, I just want to iterate for people that are watching this, this is not people that live here now and own a home that are sitting in their houses. It's not an impact fee to them, this is only new developing, new homes being built, new built homes.
Yeah, but, but my, and let me add to that, is the current, what I've talked about here today is new site, or site built bubble home. You could, if you pull a building permit, this goes to.
Right, a brand new home.
The next go around.
Or commercial building.
The next go around, I'm gonna have all the commercial stuff, that we will capture everything.
This doesn't affect, the Columbia County citizen owns his home right now, that I don't want them thinking they're gonna get charged somewhere.
When eighty five percent. When we said, you know, eighty five percent of the counties in the state of Florida have these impact fees, you got a million people a year moving in this thing. I'll promise you, them impact fees are not slowing them down.
Mr. Murphy, just for clarity, eighty five percent of every county, like us or bigger, and fifteen percent of counties are smaller.
Smaller, that's correct.
That's right, that's right, that's right, but at the end of the day, it's not a deal breaker, and I'll say one other thing, Chair, cause you was in there. Uh, when we met at Duval Place, David remembers it, I'm, I'm sure, with Warner representative, city was there, everybody was there, and they come in there, boom, popping out them questions. And, you know, of course, at that time, I think Mr. Dial, you know, said, yeah, we got impact fees, I'm sure she asked her, her team was there, whatever the number was. And he asked three times, just to make sure he heard, heard right, that guy, Columbia County has no impact fees, that's right. Columbia County had no, that's three times, and because it was a joke afterwards, you know, you must have waxed your ears, he says, okay, okay, that's fine. He, he got out of there real quick, signed on a dotted line, and, uh, cause, you know, it was, that would have been, that was a big deal, you know, but anyway, I'm ready, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank y'all.
Yes, sir. All right, all right, well, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we got ten, uh, ten minutes to get ready for our, uh, five thirty meeting.